Welcome to the Octodaria School District. Work session, Tuesday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One call, Mr. Pinn?
Certainly, Mr. Pinn.
Here. Here.
Here.
Ms. Kay.
Here.
Here. Communication audit, Dr. Woods.
Thank you, and your packets, you have the communication audit from the Chester County and Reading Unit. Excuse me, in that is their March proposal, which I think we had going over. Cost of six thousand dollars on the back page. The next item that you have is the knowledge, what we want our audiences to know, what we want our audiences to think and feel about OASD, what we want your audiences to do, and outcomes that we want to see, shifts we want to see on positive audience interaction, meaning with, audience meeting with our stakeholders. Communication audit, school district focus group questions for staff, they're included. Also with facilities and community, sorry, family and community, by us. Those focus group questions for those two groups. You have the communication invitation, as well as... That's it?
Yeah.
Something I noticed, and it's, it's super minor, but on the electronic version that we've been provided, on, you've got, the first page, it has a picture of the cheerleaders, and on the second page, in the top, it says Octodara School District. On the printout, we have, it says Oxford.
Yeah.
But in the electronic copy, it says Octodara, and if that's like going on record in minutes or for the community to access.
It's not.
And we're talking about sending six thousand, spending six thousand dollars, I would love for it to stay the right school district.
So there was two copies.
Okay.
That came through to me.
Okay.
And I had them change that, and apparently, what I said, or printed, was the first permutation of the copy.
Okay, so the one in, in our agenda, the link, okay. That's, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's, we have those.
Yeah, they've done it at several school districts, and they have favorable, obviously, this was, done at Octodara last, but it's, it's the same format.
Yeah, and it doesn't help that our initials are the same.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's me. I had, I had both in my, on my drive, so when I sent it, it must have been the first permutation there, so I apologize for that.
I've been a part of this at several other districts, and they do a fantastic job, so they really do a comprehensive study.
So, I just have a question on, I'm assuming that when this goes out to our community, these dates will be correct, this letter, at the end, since the dates are...
Yeah, you're, you're receiving...
Just a draft.
Just a draft, correct. These, this will kick back into the fall.
I just want to say, I, I'm really wholly support this procedure, this, this project. I, you know, since I've had been on the school board, everything, so many items or issues that I'm hearing have to do with communication with the district, you know, celebrating the successes of our district, how can we get the word out? So, I, I, I just think this couldn't come at a better time.
I wholeheartedly agree, meanwhile.
There's focus groups for board members, see same questions, focus group for student groups, again, they're all based on these, these same questions of knowledge, attitude, behavior, outcomes. And, and again, they're focus groups, so they're not, they're not a, a grade level or a school level, right?
So, quick question, when the data for this is all accumulated and provided back to us, are there going to be recommendations with that? Or is it just the raw data's coming back to us, or the accumulated data's coming back to us, and then it's up to us to figure it out?
No, no, this is, this is a partnership, communication audit will encompass recommendations based on the data that they receive and tailored to the school district. So, it's key that it's tailored to the school district because of our personnel, staff, et cetera, our technology.
Is the participation anonymous?
In, in so much as you aren't going to be recording the focus groups, right?
I just want to make sure we're communicating that properly with everyone that is involved, so no one has any concerns about whatever they're sharing and can openly.
That was in the proposal, that it was anonymous or comfortable?
You know, again, anonymity, if you're at a focus group, you may, that's why I said in so much as we can, if it's a focus group in a large group instruction room of, of community members, you may remember who said what, right?
I do, I do think, though, what Mrs. Deweese was referencing, was that somewhere in here, I remember reading that, that no district, and then just no leadership executive team will attend the focus groups.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
Flexible instruction days, Dr. Woods. Thank you, and in your packets, you also have the twenty, twenty, twenty and twenty-one last submission of our FIDS flexible instruction days. You also have the most current application, which would be due June first. That's, that's what I provided for you.
I requested to have this added to the agenda because this winter, when we had snow days, I was hearing from a lot of people and seeing a lot of local commentary on, well, my kid who goes to Charter has a FID day, and then my kid who goes to Oxford doesn't, we really appreciate, like, we really like these FID days, or, you know, I teach in this district, and we can do it, why, why won't Oxford do it? I've heard from teachers, specifically, I had some teachers say to me, oh, I saw this is on the agenda, you know that the teachers really want this. And I just think especially, you know, so we've heard from community, we've heard from our educators that they want it, now we're facing tight timelines over the next three years because we are doing construction over the summer, and we're having to build our calendar around it. It makes zero sense not to utilize this tool that's available to us with flexible instruction days to make sure that we can stay on the schedule we've set and allow our construction people to get their work done within that time window without having to shrink it or impact too many of our other vacation things that we, or holidays that we have set as a calendar.
I think when this was initially discussed by the board, the items that were raised were teaching students online versus in person, and what they would actually get out of the online instruction.
I understand that, but I also understand that when you have to tag days on to the end of the school year, which is after any PSSA testing, or any, or AP tests, or anything like that have been done, even if it's not online to the level that we would expect of an in-person day, in my opinion, that AP student is getting way more preparation for their test by having a FID day in February, where they do extra study guides, or have a lecture that they, they look at online. Kids are getting more out of that pre-PSSA than adding, adding anything on to the end of the school year, which is, I mean, I have a middle schooler, she's already watching movies in some of her classes. So what's adding a day on in June that a fam, that many families are just going to say, well, I wasn't expecting it to be that day, and they're going to take their kid out?
Yeah, I was just raising what the conversation was.
Right, I'm just giving the opposite side of it.
Any other questions?
I would like to see that we conclude a vote this on the agenda for next week because it's currently not on there.
That is, that would be my question, will this appear on next week's agenda?
If the majority of the group wishes to, to put it on, yeah, we'll put it out there for a vote.
I think we should put it on for a vote.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, and that's why we're here.
I know you have some teachers and staff that have given input, have we asked for, officially for input from the teachers or from the staff at the schools? If they think that this would be useful, is that the question I think is to the administration?
Oh, we, we have not asked officially, has it come from the collective bargaining unit? Yes, it has. So, to be clear, if we're putting this on the agenda, you're going to have to have the entire flexible instruction date planned for twenty-five, twenty-six, and vote on it. So, so you want me to fill out the, the application, is what I'm here, because to be on the agenda, it'd need to be voted on since the deadline is June first. So if it fails, that's fine, if it is voted on, then we could, we're going to submit that application. That application may look very similar to the twenty, twenty-one application.
And do you have, I'm not sure if you've provided that in the past, but maybe it would be helpful to bring it, if you don't have it at your hand right now, the other school districts in our area that are using the FIDS?
In county, sure, let me do that.
I also had in my, I have my notes from last year, that last year, when we discussed this, you had said, you know, we had hit, in just that one school year, all three possible requirements for which we could use it, a natural disaster, weather, and mechanical malfunctions, I'm pretty sure we had the exact same three again happen this year. And then you had also said that your personal plan as superintendent was to use three weather days prior to using FID days because kids should play in snow.
That is correct.
And it's only a maximum of five days, we're not talking about weeks of shutting down a school?
That's the variance in county, so, you know, I mean, just say, within Chester County, I believe, again, I'll have that information next week, I believe all four districts have FID days, there may be one that does not, I'll have that more accurate. Variance is when they're utilized, so some of them need to go five days, some of them need to go three days prior to utilizing their first FID day, some are two, some can utilize them right away, and those are, are, those are usually hammered out with the various labor groups of...
Any other questions? So we'll put it on the agenda for a vote?
Thank you.
All right, regular meeting agenda? Are there any questions regarding the regular meeting agenda?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of things. On the consent agenda, we have the, we have many contracts actually listed there for reapproval, are those contracts available to the board?
Yes, they're attached, they're not the board.
Yeah, they were, that's why I'm not saying. Okay, because one of them was the transportation contract as well, so I don't...
Yeah, that, that's not...
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, thank you. The other one is, there is an approval to sell and/or repurpose all outdated curriculum, technology and library materials, supplies and equipment, I was just wondering if someone could help define what does outdated mean, is there a certain criteria that would, you know, lead to, um, identify something as outdated, is there a certain number of years?
Sure, so, so curriculum that's not being used anymore, it's found on shelves, that isn't the most recently approved curriculum, technology, that would be the, for example, the teacher laptops that are going to be replaced with new laptops in this cycle, library books, and again, the library materials are covered through weeding, and we just went over that, sixty-three hundred, supplies that are, let's say, outdated or reached their expiration date, or damaged, and equipment that would no longer work or no longer serve its purpose. It's a general item that is always on the agenda because we, we just can't get rid of something without board approval.
Right, and I hear you had said about curriculum that is found on the shelves and not being used, but my understanding is most of our curriculum is electronic, is that not correct?
Uh, not, not in all cases, so again, there, there are curricular or co-curricular components that are physical, but it would also, you know, the same thing would apply to the digital content, that's no longer supported or no longer used.
Okay, so there's not a timeframe, that's what I was trying to understand, like, for electronic data, is it, do you replace it every few years, or?
Well, yeah, there is, there is a timeframe, like, in, in the curriculum, for the, it's a four-year curriculum cycle, so if it's replaced within that cycle, the old materials would need to be evacuated. With our technology, there are leases for that technology, but in order for us to sell those units that are off lease, which is what we do in many cases, not all cases, sell them back to the manufacturer, we need, again, the permission, so, so there are inherent dates built in, obviously, there's not inherent dates built in to library books or supplies except for expiration dates, and there's no inherent recycling or equipment unless it is no longer used or is damaged beyond repair.
So, for the four-year cycle, when a curriculum comes up for, to be replaced potentially, where does that decision come from? I know the board usually adopts or approves a curriculum, but where does the underlying conversation take place to have it...
As you were, I believe you were part of that group?
Yep.
The curriculum committees?
Mm-hmm.
And again, the four-year cycle, the curriculum committees meet throughout those four years, and, and you are correct, that approval for curricular components are done at the board, if you're a thirty-day review.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the, just the information on that one. The other question that are, a couple of the other items that I have, is we have the, under the consent agenda, the appointment of the solicitor, Ranaldi and Pavar, Pavarma, sorry, Pavarma. I don't know if there's been any other bids sent out, or any other solicitors, or if the idea is just to renew the contract that they have?
The idea would be to renew, there has not been any bid sent out.
Okay, and no changes to the contract? The original contract?
There's no changes, I don't know, I don't think the rate changed, I think the rate, it's right on there.
Sorry, because a lot of these things were attached, so I'm just asking, thank you for what I'm asking.
No, any changes would be right on there.
You mean on the contract?
On to your agenda.
Oh, perfect, yeah, that's great, thank you. And then we have the policy revision, under policy revision for the consent agenda, oh, I think it's under consent, maybe not, sorry, no, it's by itself. It was approval of policy thirty-nine fifty and sixty-three hundred, it was an A and A, but the two were together, I have a couple of questions about that, so I just want to make sure, my understanding is that needs to go through the three readings, is the sixty-three hundred, even though it's now been edited even as of just tonight, is that the three readings has been completed, and so we're voting to approve that policy, is that correct?
So, it's a very good point you're making on this, because of what happened tonight with sixty-three hundred, and I explained this to the chair, this will need to go to sixty-three hundred, will need to go to the June work session for any discussion, but even at the June work session for that discussion, it's already gone through two readings.
So it'll be the last reading?
So it would be the last reading, and then on the agenda, so that would be taken off of the agenda?
And sorry, so the last reading, just so I understand, will the vote take place at the second reading in June?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If, if you so choose to vote.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then, sorry, the last one was the first reading of policy eleven eighty-five, broadcasting, board meetings, I don't think that we, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I stopped under my breath, I was agreeing with you.
Okay, yeah, so we haven't reviewed this one at the policy committee yet, so my question is, should this also not be on the agenda for this week?
You need to see the language and the...
It's a first reading.
It's item M, first reading for policy eleven eighty-five, needs to...
I think it needs to be removed.
Yeah, you are correct.
Okay. And then there was one other item, and I can't remember what it's under, I, oh, actually, I think it's under preliminary curriculum review, and it was talking about high school novels, that we would be approving a list of high school novels, can you just explain that, tell us what that is? Like, are those actually, because I, there wasn't anything attached, so I'm not sure what we're looking at, is that names of books that are coming into the library, or?
No, those, those would be novels, the co-curricular novels, that would be utilized in the ELA.
And were they not approved before, that's what I'm trying to understand, was there a change in the curriculum? Sorry.
There's not a change in the curriculum, but those, what we, what we have discovered is that new novels are coming in, so we're applying the same litmus test to any books that are coming in the school district. So these novels, which I think we have on display in the, in the admin building, some are not new titles, some are, for, for point of reference, Huckleberry Finn's, they're not new books.
Right.
But we wanted to make sure that we were following our, our policy, for any new titles, or any co-curricular titles that students would be reading that aren't library associated, but are ELA associated, so, in other words, co-curricular titles, they may be found in the library, but they may not be found in the library.
Okay.
That make sense?
It does, yes, and do you have an idea roughly how many that there are, is there like, like, handful?
Looks like about eight, ten?
Okay, just a few, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I think that was, I think that's all my questions.
Can we get that last year working, yeah?
Yeah, I don't...
Prior to the...
Would the, which committee?
The board, so, oh, yeah, okay.
Sorry, just one other question, I apologize, can you clarify the tax levy?
Provided, so it may not, yeah.
Yeah, so we just have the...
Yeah. So you'll have that on your agenda, right?
Before we move on...
I mean, the titles, we want...
Thank you very much. Before we move off of that topic, is whether we approve the list or do not, or the board, if we approve of it, parents still have the option to pop their students out reading that particular title if they don't want to read it, is that correct?
Yes.
And then they can do another assignment?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, is that, you can clarify that for us, I apologize, so I was just asking if someone could clarify more about the tax levy on the agenda.
Sure, so this is an annual motion the district is required to make, which sets the tax levy for next year, and this is the tax levy that we saw at my ass committee, recommended by my ass committee, that was entered into this board a month ago, but we have to have it here as a standalone motion to agree.
And the percentage is?
So, so there's no percentage in this particular motion, it would be actual levies here, it'd take four percent increase over last year's motion.
That was all my questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, closing on your calendar, Tuesday, May twentieth, Education Committee, six-thirty PM in this building, Tuesday, May twentieth, regular meeting, seven PM in this building, Friday, May thirtieth, graduation, six PM, at the Oxford High School, Tuesday, June tenth, Policy Committee meeting, six PM, and that's in this building, Tuesday, June tenth, Athletics and Student Activities, six-thirty, Facilities and Safety, six forty-five, both in this building, June tenth, work session, seven PM, June seventeenth, Education Committee, six-thirty PM, and June seventeenth, regular meeting in this building, seven PM.
Mark, I have a change, the Education Committee will be on the twentieth, we will not meet in June, so our next meeting will be in August.
Okay, so Education meeting for, so June seventeenth, you're, you are having?
No.
You're not having a June seventeenth?
Not having, so it's August nineteenth, the next one, at six-thirty.
I have a comment, just go, oh, sorry, and I have a comment as well, sorry, I'm checking my voice. The May twentieth regular meeting, I just wanted to highlight that this is a voting day, so obviously, for those that are working the polls, or wanting to go out to do any kind of poll activities, it's difficult to make a regular meeting and be at the polls, so I would just want to request, I, I realize it's maybe a little late for this one, but for the November meeting, and I know we've had this conversation as a board several times, so I just wanted to, you know, clarify it tonight, that that one would not be held on a voting, on a, sorry, the regular meeting would not be held on a night when we're voting, please. It, I think, I don't know why this keeps recurring, I, I, I don't know if it needs to be brought up every year.
It's always been that way for years, years and years and years.
I know, it was agreed to by the board that we wouldn't do it, so that's why, I just want to make sure, as these things come up, I'm not sure if there needs to be a policy in place, or I'm not sure how we, how we not run into this issue again, how we avoid this issue in the future, but it is, it is an issue for people that are on the board running again, that want to be at the, at the voting places, so...
I've been a candidate, haven't I?
It's a problem.
I agree, but, I agree, but I think it was the conversation you have in April.
Right, I'm just saying, it was already approved, like, several times, everybody here, we have the same conversation, and that's why I'm wondering if we don't need a policy or something for this specific item, because we continue to agree, we continue to suggest that we move away from this date when it lands on a voting day, but, you know, how can we in the future prevent this from happening? So I'm just trying to figure out, I realize this is happening on May twentieth, that's fine, you know, the candidates will have to deal with that, but in the future, how, how can we prevent this from continuing to occur?
I don't know if the administration can provide some guidance, please, for this.
Well, we'll have to look at the two calendars and make sure that we move it prior, the prior month.
So, like Andrew said, the, the general election day is the first Tuesday, remember, so that's why I just...
Tuesday after the first one, after the first one.
Oh, okay.
Ask, ask the...
Thank you. So the prior... So the primary is the, uh, is that always on the third, the third Tuesday of the month? Does anybody know?
I, I don't know what the calendar holds, but the appropriate place to do that is when we're setting meetings at the reorganization meeting. When we do the calendar, that, that would be the appropriate place to have those discussions and then determine the dates, uh, that the primary and the general election take place.
At the reorganization meeting, when you have new people coming on the board and they don't understand or can't look that far ahead and, you know, don't realize that as they're new to the board? That's why I'm trying to figure out, is there something, a policy or some kind of guideline that we can put in place? So that no matter who's on the board, that that conversation isn't left up to one person to raise, whether it's the board president or someone else on the board, that as a general rule, we as a district would not hold a board meeting on the night of the election?
I agree, I agree with you, and I think the community should have the opportunity to be attending the meetings as well and not have to choose between the two, if they want to work the polls or, you know, go vote. I'm not disagreeing with you. I think we just need to, to be diligent and make sure that, um, we're, again, communicating. I wasn't even thinking about that.
But this is my point, and it's not your fault, I mean, I could blame you, but I'm just saying, it's not your fault. It's just every single year, there'll be another president, someone newly elected at the reorganization meeting. And what I'm asking is, how can we ensure that as a board, we don't have this reoccurring issue? Unless someone raises it?
Well, send it to the policy, and policy can address it if they so choose to.
I just have one quick suggestion. Do you work off of, like, a template for our reorganization meetings? So can that just be added to the template for the reorg meeting?
It certainly can be, so the, the prescription is that for the year, the dates and times are decided at the reorg meeting. That's how it's supposed to work, but certainly, that could be something that's going to, and you would know the May one in the sample.
Right.
So you just have to do it.
That was just, that was, it seems like it could be added to the template.
Okay, so, and I think in addition to that, I would like to raise it to the policy committee. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Blessington, if you could take that back to the policy committee to at least have the conversation, if we could have a one-page policy put together where if it does fall on that and someone misses it by, for some reason, that it can be moved. That there's not, you know, we're not stuck with that date. So, I would like to have a policy in place for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other changes to the calendar?
This isn't a change, but I just wanted to point out that there is a different date on all of the agendas tonight, all the committee meeting agendas for when the next meeting will be. And it should all be the same, and it should be, it is what you read, but if people happen to go home and look at their agendas, from, say, a policy meeting tonight about when the policy, next policy meeting is, it may not be the correct one.
June tenth is the correct one, but it said, one said June eighth, one said June tenth, and one said June seventeenth.
Public comment. Ronnie Lutz?
Good evening, Ronnie Lutz, East Nottingham Township. And, um, what I'd like to address is, um, a couple of the things that Mrs. Kay's brought up on next week's agenda. And, one of those is, the most important one right now, um, is the, this, um, approval to address the outdated curriculum, whether fiscal or electronic. And since we're going, you are going to be looking at the curriculum, I would like to know what is being done about the SEL curriculum that is currently unapproved by the federal government? And if during that meeting, it is going to fall in this weeding out process and another curriculum is going to be available first, uh, you know, for the, at the beginning of the September twenty-five school year? It's, it's actu- it's, it's absolutely paramount that this takes place, because if it doesn't, then it's going to put this district, as well as on certain, probably other districts in the state of Pennsylvania, which is going to bring scrutiny to the state of Pennsylvania Department of Education, which is already currently under scrutiny by the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division has, is, um, considering a situation happening in Unionville that is being leaned back onto the Department of Education. This is not play, this is very, very serious. And as a board, and as a superintendent, and assistant superintendent, you are standing in defiance of the law in front of minor students, that you are responsible for their education, which includes the Constitution. And for you to stand in defiance of that, as well as this board by not acting on it, because this board, the superintendents, work for the board. So, buck stops with you guys. It needs to be addressed. And as far as sixty-three hundred being voted on without three readings after we've gone through this massive change? We're not talking commas in that. This is just a push-through to get something done that's still not in compliance. Because, that's the other thing, the fact that we have these types of books in the library, gender-confusing transgender books for little children in second and third grade, about little boys coming to school dressed like little girls and the best part of their day is peeing in the girls' bathroom and sitting down and looking at their little heart, red hard underwear? I'm sorry, people, that is out of compliance with the current law. And it will come back on you. May take a while, but I'm a patient person.
Thank you, Ms. Lutz. Lisa Coza?
Hi, um, Lisa Coza, West Nottingham Township. I just wanted to take a brief moment to, um, ask for support of, of the board next week for the vote on the flexible instruction days. My support of that does not mean that I am anti-snow day. I truly agree with Mr. Woods that, um, kids make memories on those snow days, and so I'm supportive of that. But I think we've seen that these, um, just allows us to have the flexibility that we would need, um, in situations like we had this year with Jordan Bank. And as Ms. Deweese also mentioned, with the upcoming construction. If you've ever done construction in your own homes, you know there's always something pops up. So, the chances that we might need to use them could increase in the next year. So I just ask for you to really consider, um, voting yes for those flexible instruction days. And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Coza. Announcement of executive session?
Mr. Patterson. Public comment time, you don't have to sign out, that's for items on the agenda. I got a statement I'd like to make, please.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. And you, you wanted to speak but didn't sign up?
Yeah.
Yep.
Briefly.
Just a little bit of a jenga set back there, you know?
Good evening, Charles Gouliot, I'm here. I wanted to commend Mrs. Kay's on her comments about the meeting schedules concerning elections and all, and address the, uh, false statements that were made, that it's been that way for years and years and years. That is incorrect and not true. And that we had, at one time, only a few years ago, why it was changed was beyond me. But the solution, simple solution, which eliminates conflicting, I know tonight, there's a township meeting that someone that did attend would also like to have been here. How we always had met was on Monday evenings. And the board can certainly change that and make a simple change, because election days historically are always Tuesdays. So meeting on a Monday, solution, and it has not been that way for years and years and years. Only I would gather in the last five or six years. And why that was changed is beyond me, because, uh, I think it's actually, uh, a way of addressing an issue or called control, so. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Okay, announcement of executive session. Date will be May twentieth, topic will be legal, and it will be in reference to, um, required reports for safety. Closing items.
I'd like to say something before you adjourn.
And, uh, before I do close on the adjourn, I just wanted to, uh, recognize Ms. Deweese's twenty-first birthday this evening. Who's on the board? All right, um... Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I would just like to point out that there are two board members here that are sitting at the table who are missing a concert that their children, uh, perform in, are performing in this evening. And I know, um, that they both went through, uh, a lot of thought on whether they should be here or there. And, uh, I don't envy you, uh, Mrs. Deweese or Mr. Atkinson, uh, having to make that decision. I understand, I have made, uh, decisions like that myself, uh, while I've been on the board. So thank you for showing up tonight and contributing to this meeting. I hope your children understand.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Shall I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, you adjourn.